It's good?
Yes.
Okay.
Mayor, we're good.
Cool.
Mr. Mayor.
Call meeting to order. Shelley can do roll call, please.
Mr. Mayor, thank you. District one, Councilman Rios.
Here.
District two, Councilman Pastor.
Here.
District three, Councilman Lethem.
President.
District four, Vice Mayor Stapleton.
Yes.
District five, Councilman Gonzalez.
Here.
District six, Councilman Shipley.
Here.
Mayor Gamaros.
Here.
We do have a core, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Shelley. Chief, can you lead us in invocation, please?
Our kind Father in heaven, we give thanks unto thee at this time for those blessings that thou has given us, for the opportunities we have, for the freedoms that we enjoy. Grateful for those who served to protect our freedom and to protect our community and to see that the services needed within our, our community are, are present and working. We would ask thy blessings on those within our community who may continue to mourn or are in need, that they may find the, the comfort and the opportunities they're in need of to be able to have those necessities that they need. And please watch over and bless the, those who serve within our community, keep them safe. And please watch over these proceedings, help those who are in a position to make decisions, to do so in a manner that will be of benefit to, to our community. Again, we are grateful to thee this time for all that thou gives to us. And we say this in the name of Jesus Christ.
Amen.
Jesse, can you lead us into place, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Start with summary of current events. Mariano, we'll start with you down there.
Just two things, Mr. Mayor. Thank you. Please be mindful of the speed limit throughout the Globe Miami region. I see too many speeders out there and people in a hurry, and I realize we have lots of construction and people are impatient. I was in a near miss the other day, and it brings the point home that if you're in a hurry, leave earlier. Take your time on the roads. And the second thing is, I'm very pleased to note that the city has opened up the Yuma Bridge. And again, please be cautious as you're crossing that bridge. There are other improvements coming to that one, and hopefully we can get Haskins Road open as well, the Haskins Bridge. That's all I have, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Fernando?
Well, first of all, I'd like to wish my wife a happy birthday. So she's very important to me, so I better, better do that. And then, like to thank the Love Where You Live people. They, they worked on the Haskell staircase on Tuesday, last Tuesday. So we've got a lot of volunteers out there, and it looks, looks really good. And I'm not sure who came out the day before, but they spread out gravel and decomposed granite, and it really looks a lot better. So thanks to everybody that made that happen. That's it, Mayor.
Freddie?
I have nothing tonight, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you.
Oh, yes, Mr. Mayor. Looks like Rayelle's been pretty busy over there at the library. She's left some really nice, good information here on the, on the desk for us. She's got a, a Holocaust survivor coming to the library. Mr. Dirk Van Leenen, he's coming the sixth of December at 10 o'clock in the morning. That should probably be a pretty good historical discussion going on. So it's, I'm sure Rayelle will put some of this on the radio or something, or somebody will get it out there. And then she's even got some classic Christmas movies coming up. A Wonderful Life, Miracle on Thirty Fourth Street, and The Christmas Carol, and that's over the first three weeks of December. So if you're looking for something to do and don't have anything to do, you might want to take your kids down to the movies. And it says free popcorn, so being a popcorn freak, I try to go down there and get some of that. But anyways, that's all I have, Mayor.
Thank you, Mike. Jesse?
Something I have is, if you haven't checked it out, the Chamber of Commerce has a new website up and running. It's got a calendar of events that anybody from the public is able to post on and be approved from by the staff there. So that's your leisure. Take a look at that. It's pretty neat. Go ahead, Mayor.
Yeah, Mayor, I just have a few reminders of upcoming events. First of all, the free Thanksgiving dinner is Wednesday, the 26th, at St. Paul's Methodist Church. Everybody's welcome. Meals are also available for homebound delivery. And if you need to do that, contact Tim Gonzalez with the Homeless Coalition. I won't be doing it again this year. I think this is the first time in 10, 12 years that I haven't done it. But without the restaurant, it was, I did it last year down the street, and it, it just didn't work out as well. So I'm gonna let them take over, and I'll be down there helping them serve this year. Then second, First Friday's coming back. December 5th, from 3:00 to 7:00. So I'm sure everybody's looking forward to that. And then the 37th Annual Festival of the Lights at Beche will be December 6th, from 5:00 to 9:00, and that's also a free admission. And then, kinda like what you said, Mike, for the kids, there's a Read On Express, December 13th, at the Depot, from 12:00 to 4:00, and that's all free. And lastly, everybody's excited for this, the Light Parade will be December 13th at 6:00 downtown. I'm not sure of the route yet, but I don't know if they're gonna go all the way.
Same route.
Same route.
Good. So I'm sure everybody's looking forward to that. And that's all I have, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you, Mike. I want to recognize Chairman Rambler from St. Carlos Apache Tribe in the audience tonight. We're gonna be reading a proclamation. Who'd be accepting? So welcome, Chairman. Tomorrow, the 19th, at 1:00, will be Coffee with the Mayor at Copper Cities Coffee. Everybody invited, whoever wants to come and hear some updated information that's out there. I attended the Veterans Day events in Miami, and I want to congratulate them for a great event they had there. They truly, they had a parade, they had a ceremony there, also putting more bricks in. I think it was over 100 bricks that they put into their Veterans Park area. Yeah, Mike was there. No, it was not, it was a great event, that they really did a good job with it. So I commend them for that. Also want to remind people about the Small Business Association loans. They're still available. I understand they'll be here another two weeks, and I know it's hard to accept debt, but we gotta remember when this disaster took place, that there's gonna be losses, and maybe this is the only option people have, whether you're business or resident. Take advantage of these low interest loans. They, they're 3%, 3.5%, you can extend them for 30 years. You don't have to pay for the first, for the first year till you receive that loan. To date, they have approved 76 home loans and 18 business loans for 1 point, around 1.3 million dollars in, in loans. So that, you know, a lot of people are hearing more about that. Like I said, I think if they get more interest, they'll stay beyond the two weeks. And they're staying, they're, they're at the Chamber of Commerce still. I think it's from eight, nine to four, nine to five still?
Nine to five.
Nine to five, Monday through Friday. So make sure you take advantage of that. Just go see if you qualify. If you don't, that, that's fine, but if you do, then you, you have the choice whether to take that loan or not. I also want to read Globe Miami, the Freeport Macoran has a resilience fund. They just released a new poster with a QR code on it. It's important that people fill out this survey in our community. These are for needs. This investment's gonna be a $2 million. It will support a range of initiatives to enhance community wellbeing, such as infrastructure improvements, economic growth, and other projects that benefit residents, especially with everything happening with the disaster. You know, what is the needs of the community? That's what they want to hear. So it's important, and we, we have some in a folder back here on the table. Please take one, scan the QR code. It doesn't take you very long to do the survey. That's how they're gonna judge or determine who gets this money. You know, a need in our community is our ladder truck. So you know, that, that's a critical need. So you know, make sure that we fill that out. And so we have them out there. This is a new one that just came out again. And I want to thank Apache Gold Casino Chairman Rambler again for the 12D grant. That was awarded to a police and fire of public safety for some equipment. That was awarded to them a couple, a couple of weeks ago. Thank you. Appreciate the Apache Gold Casino for forwarding that 12D grant to our public safety departments. And that's all I have. Paul?
Mr. Mayor, members of council, we are very busy getting back to normal, and it's a good feeling. It's a, it's a good goal. We're, we're getting there and getting ready for Christmas. I think everybody's, you know, we see, we're so happy to see all the businesses reopening. They've worked really hard to get everything back together and get their doors open. They're getting back to normal. We're getting back to normal. And we even have Yuma open this morning. And so we're, it's, it's restricted, but we made it safe, very low speed, be careful going across it. And we're working on the same thing for Haskins Bridge. So we're, we're just pecking away at it, trying to, to take on the, the challenges as they come. And they, they're still coming, but we're still, you know, we're still getting back to normal is the theme of the month. Get ready for the holidays. Mr. Mayor, members of council, that's all I have.
I think, go ahead, Freddie.
Thank you. Shelley, by chance, do we have a hard copy agenda? My device is, is not on the way.
Can't get in. I got, I forgot a couple of things.
There we go. Here you go, Shelley.
Do you need to pack it for the, okay.
You go. Go ahead, Fernando.
I forgot, Town Miami is having Cowboy Christmas on December 6th, and it'll be from 12 to 6 p.m. So they're gonna block off Sullivan Street between Miami Avenue and Keystone, and it's, it's gonna be kind of a cool event. So if you can get down there. And then on December 13th, Upton's is gonna have a Christmas market. So if you have things that you'd like to market for Christmas, or wanna go Christmas shopping, that'd be something to check out. That's it.
I do have one more thing to add, too. United Fund of Globe Miami, again, we, we ask you to continue to contribute to that fund. Remember that the business part of it is being administered by Local First of Arizona. I know there's a lot of comments on social media out there, where's the money? You know, they've had a lot of money donated to that account. Gotta remember, it's been pledged and not received. So the first round went out to a lot of the businesses. I can't remember how many, over 40 of them at this point. But the other part is, we've heard a million dollar donation, a half million dollar donation, but those have not, definitely those have been pledged. So we ask everybody to be patient, that, that money will come out. I know they, they're working hard to, to determine the next distribution and moving it forward. And if you're a resident, the money is being administered by Salvation Army of Globe. You need to go into their, their office here on Cedar Street. Fill out an application to see if you qualify for that funding, also for Salvation Army. So we'll go to the first community call of the public. Again, this is a time when anybody from the public can come forward and address the council. There is a three-minute limit, and at this time, when they, when you do come up for community to call the public, we cannot respond to you as a council. We can direct staff to follow up with any concerns that may occur. I do have one. Dave Barry? Dave, there.
Hello, everybody. I'm David Barry. I'm a member of properties in downtown Globe. I just want to give an update on the progress that's been taking place. I've kind of was working on 410 and 424, the buildings that are at the corner, the brick ones. They changed from green tag to red tag, so I've been focusing in my energy on working with Paul and trying to come up with a workable solution. We're in the middle of that and can hopefully come up with a few different bids or contracts to try to have that resolved. 438, the Globe Antique Mall, they're working hard, and they're in need of volunteers to help them finish off, so they can be open for Christmas. 420, 428, and 430, 430 is my neighbor, Thomas. And we've been in discussions on how to turn this issue into a long-term solution that can benefit everybody in the community. We've submitted some designs back to each other to see how we'd like to work together to fix those two buildings. They were some of the hardest hit. And then on 470, the building next to Loca Sita, I've done everything that was required by the structural engineers. I've cleaned out in front, boarded it up, and I'd like the fence to be removed, so Loca Sita can have further parking and access. And I think that the fences being over there are causing more people to walk around and more of a danger to hazard, danger from traffic than they are from the building. The building only received some internal damage from a, a car hitting an internal wall, and that's been addressed. I brought in, I forgot inspector's name. He was a really nice guy. Gary Grimes from your city came in and take, took a look at everything after I fixed, did the repairs. And I believe that building should be ready to be opened, and more parking and availability downtown should be addressed. I've had a number of people reach out to me about the Globe Miami United Fund and transparency on that. So if there's any clarification or information that can be provided to me on that, I'd greatly appreciate it. And everybody's just chipping along downtown, you know, it's, it's just a battle of dust now. It's never-ending amount of dust. It finds every nook and cranny it can get, and just when you think you've gotten it all, it comes out and rears its head again. But people are pretty diligent. It's really good to see Loca Sita back open, and then their employees working again. It's good to see the Ford Ranger that was on the top of the car pile parked behind, and the dishwasher back at work. So it's good to see people are actually making some progress from the flood. But the, the main thing I'd like to see is just the fence in front of 470 either pushed back against the building or removed, so that there's further parking and more accessibility for the public, so Loca Sita can operate without any issues. So thank you guys for everything.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next we have special presentations, and item three is be a presentation, a proclamation proclaiming November 2025 as National Native American Heritage Month, and I will read that, and now we'll present it to Chairman Rambler. So the proclamation states, Native American Heritage Month, November 2025. Whereas Native American Heritage Month is celebrated in November to honor the culture, traditions, and achievements of Native Americans. It also, it is also a time to recognize Native American veterans who have served to defend the United States. And whereas the first federal recognition of Native American Heritage Month was in 1990, but its roots trace back to the early 1900s, when Seneca archaeology Dr. Arthur C. Parker fought for a federal recognition day. And whereas in 1976, the United States Congress passed a resolution authorizing President Gerald Ford to proclaim a week of October, in October, as Native American Awareness Week. On October 8th, 1976, he issued his presidential proclamation. Decades later, Congress and the, and the president have set aside time to honor Native Americans. And whereas this month highlights the remarkable diversity of Native American cultures, languages, traditions, and spiritual beliefs stemming from their varied geographic origins, historical adaptations to different environments, and distinct tribal affiliations. Such diversity makes them a highly heterogeneous population across the United States, even within a single tribe. Significant culture variations can exist depending on regional differences and individual practices. And whereas Native American communities today face significant challenges, including high poverty rates, inadequate access to healthcare, and limited educational opportunity, housing disparities, high rates of substance, substance abuse, and mental health issues, systemic discrimination, and historical, historic, historical trauma stemming from colonization all contributing to significant health and socioeconomic inequalities compared to the general population. And whereas the City of Globe is committed to sharing the rich histories and contributions of the Native Americans and their resilience to thrive with each passing generation, this November and every month, we celebrate the culture and the heritage of these remarkable Americans who deeply enrich the quality and character of our nation. And whereas as a community that values diversity, equity, inclusion, and history, the City of Globe will continue to acknowledge and celebrate Native American Heritage Month and recognize the original inhabitants of Americas for their rich traditions, inventions, government, agriculture, astrology, sports, and Medicare. And it is further resolved that the City of Globe will actively engage in the collective responsibility to teach and affirm Native American heritage, culture, history, and community. And now therefore, as we the City of Globe Council do hereby proclaim, November as Native American Month for the City of Globe. So if you want to come forward, Chair?
Thank you, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and the council. We appreciate this very much. Before I start, I just want to say it's, it was incredible to see the unity and togetherness that you all showed during the recent storms. How you came together, overcame those challenges, and you would never tell a storm passed through this area. I mean, that was incredible, just the unity and all that. And I just want to say that also thank you for the Apache Day that you, you host every year. That also means a lot to our people. And as we move forward, I hope and pray that we always teach our children about who we are as a people, our culture, our history, that they never forget about that, because that's, that's their identity, just as my identity is being Apache. I was made by my Creator God and nobody else, just as we all are. And I hope that we honor those cultures, traditions, and histories as we move forward. And lastly, I just want to, I also hope and pray that we continue teaching our children those things that our Creator God expects us of, the simple things in life, like being respectful, being forgiving, helping those in need, and praying for each other. And I think those simple things in life can bring us together more and make this, make this region that we all live in a better region. Not only economic-wise, but just being who we are as a people. And that will help also enrich Arizona and the United States of America. So thank you for this, and I'll share this with our council. Have a good night.
Item B is Police Chief Dan Walters will present an update to council on the Arizona Law Enforcement Accreditation Program recognition.
Good evening, Mayor. Good evening, council. Before I start, can I get Hayden Van Heren to come down here with me, please? This is Hayden. She is our very first ever police aide. And so, and she was really looking forward to giving a speech, so go ahead.
Oh, good.
It's all yours. Show this to all the council members while I talk.
Okay.
Thanks. You're looking kinda pale.
Yeah, we're old. We gotta.
Thank you.
Nice.
Cool.
Wow, look at you.
Wow.
So Mayor and council, this has been a long time coming. We've been working on this for a number of years. This all stemmed, for those of you that were sitting council when I was fortunate enough to get hired here. I made a commitment to the council and to our community to try to develop a methodology that would prevent the police department from getting into the dark hole that it was in when I got here, that has longevity moving forward. And the best way I could come up with was the ACOB accreditation program, which forces the departments to follow best practice. And if you do nothing else, and then create as a condition of employment for any chief that comes after me to maintain that accreditation, that is the best way to ensure that you provide best practices to our community and most updated information on a constant basis because of the checks and balances that go into it. This process was not easy, particularly coming from where we, we came from. She's still standing behind me, huh?
Hey, good egg.
So this process was multi-years with, we started it when, just before COVID hit. And then that kind of put a kibosh on it for a while, and we had to reengage it. There's a couple people I want to, I want to single out a little bit and to say thank you. The first, if Lieutenant Castaneda could stand up. So AJ had the misfortune of being the first person really kinda assigned to work on the accreditation process. And it was, it was overwhelming with the stuff that he had to do and stuff. And, but he stuck it out the entire time and did a phenomenal job throughout. But realistically, his saving grace is Officer Chad Drexler. Go ahead. Go ahead and stand up, Chad. So I want to give a special thank you to Chad. Among his many achievements throughout the year, one stands out as determining contribution. His leadership in guiding the Globe Police Department through the complex, demanding process of becoming a fully accredited agency through the Arizona Chiefs of Police Association. Through relentless dedication, countless late nights, and unwavering focus, he ensured that every policy and standard met the highest expectations. In September of twenty twenty five, the department achieved full accreditation through ALIP, an accomplishment made possible in large part because of his vision, perseverance, and meticulous attention to detail. So a special thank you to Chad. So Chad is the only person in the department that people cringe more than when I walk in. He stayed on top of everybody. Chad, how many different proofs did we have to provide? Every policy and procedure that we, we wrote within the police department over the last several years, and AJ was a huge part of that, had to meet the accreditation standards through ALIP to a T. And then it had to go through the chain of command to get approved. And some of the policies, you have to conform to the size agency that you're in. And so we would have to manipulate them so it would fit our size agency. And then after the command approved it, then it had to go out to all the police personnel, and they would have to review it and sign off on it, and we had proof that they'd been trained up on it. And then they get updated. We've only been accredited for a month, and we're already doing updates as it goes. So my point for this council is that's exactly what you're looking for. You're looking for them to stay on top, to make sure their policies and procedures and their practices are in the best interest of the community and the best practice of this, of this profession. So a big round of thanks to the men and women of the Globe Police Department. You guys, I put a lot of pressure on you over the last several years, and every one of you stood up to it, and I really, really appreciate it. But more importantly, the community that we serve really appreciates. So thank you very much. We were awarded this exactly twenty-four hours before the storm hit, so we haven't really had a chance to talk about it. The plaque will be hanging up at the police department, along with an award that sits on my desk. And if you have any, any questions concerning the accreditation or the process or anything, we're here to answer whatever you have.
Mr. Mayor. Glad you pointed that out, that that award was given the day before. After a long career in emergency management, the twenty-sixth occurred, that flood. What I looked for during that three-week period immediately after was the battle rhythm of our staff. Were they doing the mind meld thing? Were they dealing with the incoming resources well? Was there a sense of command and control at the top? And what about the field officers, including the PD? Were they doing their work together? All of you hit that mark, and I was very proud of all of you, including Public Works, and how fast you did the mind meld thing. And for a long month, maintained command and control with all of your fellow agencies. And those are the compliments I got as time went on through that month, how well you all did that job. This is the reason that you do these things. You never know when your next disaster is going to occur. You may have more than one. So you constantly have to plan, train, exercise, so that you can do it again. Sometimes three at once, that, that happened to me one day. The point being, this is why you do these things. It was really a great level of excellence that I saw. And I knew every day was fraught with danger, and I appreciate all that you all did out there. But it's because of your training and your accomplishment in this particular certificate that you were ready to go. So thank you.
Thank you, Council.
Thank you, sir.
Chief, I think in behalf of all of us, I think we just want to thank for your leadership in the department and bringing them forward, and it shows here, you know, everybody here just. Thank you for your leadership.
Yep.
I do want to say thank you to this council, because without, without all of you, Mayor and Council, and city leadership, particularly Paul, we wouldn't be able to accomplish this. This was a huge undertaking. We needed a lot of support with it. We got everything I asked for through Paul and through this body. You were incredibly supportive for it. And our next step now is reaching out to the company that did the evaluation in twenty fifteen. I would like them to come back up. We've talked about this previously, and reevaluate us to, so you have the documented proof on where we're at right now. So it's been my greatest honor working here, and we're not done yet. There is more stuff I want to get done, but we're moving in the right direction, and I really appreciate all the support from all of you, so thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Chief.
Item C is staff will present the council with an update on economic development and First Friday. Can we have Melissa presenting?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Tonight, we're giving a brief update on events and sharing our plan for First Friday moving forward. There are going to be a few changes. I want to reintroduce Kathleen Vega. She's the Recreation and Special Events Manager, and she's already been a tremendous help with planning and coordination coming back into December. We're also improving our weather awareness as well as a schedule update plan, which we'll get into further on. Okay, so first, we have bright news. December is on. We're going to have First Friday, the Light Parade, everything that Vice Mayor mentioned during his intro. First Friday will serve as the kickoff for Hope to the Holidays, which is a month-long event-filled event that will bring hope, joy, and really just focus on bringing our community back together. We are taking on a collaborative approach to this event, this month-long joyful thing. And that will be a huge collaboration with much thanks to Kathleen. She has helped pull together all of the partners who have events in the downtown area. We've had two full meetings, and that includes Globe Downtown Association, Globe Miami Chamber of Commerce, the Center for the Arts, United Fund of Globe Miami, Love Where You Live. We've all sat in the room twice now to bring hope home for the holidays. We're going to market this event as a tourism event to bring people back to Globe, try to boost the economy, and also our joy.
Well, we're going to start off with First Fridays for the Hope for the Holidays, but we're hoping that they'll stay over for the night and do Tipah Hero for the next day. That also happens on the same day as the Festival of Lights. So we're hoping to get a couple of people to come in and join us for those events and stay for another day, so that we get everybody there to hopefully stay overnight, eat at the restaurants, and see our town without the flood.
We are going to have a whole slew of activities that are being marketed, as well as a, a bunch of new events that include the businesses, so a reindeer run, the Upton's Market, we're going to do a light parade, lighting of the tree. We also have a business who has decided to donate decorations to downtown Globe, and they are a professional business. They've done other cities and events. And so they're going to help us really light up for the holidays, which is going to be wonderful. We have a meeting with them this week to see what exactly that entails, but I think it's going to be really big. After December, there are a few changes, especially with Kat coming on board. We're going to see things change in the new year. First Friday will continue, but it's going to have a new face. It's going to be a little bit different. So as you can see on the little calendar we have here, January and February will be business-focused. That means we won't be doing the whole street closure, vendors, everything like that. We're going to be focusing people indoors to businesses to shop local. March, April will be as usual, May will be as usual. The hottest months of the year are going to be June, July, and August. Those, we are going to go indoor again because it's just too hot. We've had a couple incidents where people have actually gone to the emergency room because of heat, and especially near the end of the summer, it's monsoon season. So we're taking a look at weather in a whole new light now after the event flooding. Thank God it wasn't a First Friday, because that would have been horrible. Again, September, October, November, and December will be full events as long as the weather holds.
And then the summer months are important because I also serve as the pool manager, so my focus will be in two different places, and this will allow me to focus back on the pool during those summer months.
I just want to reiterate that First Friday is not going to go away. We're just adjusting dates and times for business support, really refocusing our intention into the businesses. Hopefully, it'll boost more collaboration and participation, as well as support sustainability for the event in the long run. And then, as I mentioned, weather impacts heat and safety. We just need to take a closer look and a proactive approach to making sure that people are safe at our events. If you guys have any questions, thank you. I just want to reiterate that First Friday was created for COVID, and things have changed since then, and they're going to continue changing, and we hope to continue changing the event to meet the needs of our community.
I just have a quick question. So I was talking to somebody today, and they said that, that our guidelines for being a vendor, you have to have a business license now, is that right?
Yes.
And a tax number or something like that, soon?
Yes.
Okay. And that wasn't before, that's a fairly recent thing, or?
It only wasn't during COVID, but we have needed a, a business license.
Since COVID, okay, thank you.
Question on that follow-up, is that a vendor license or a business license, they're all the same?
They're all the same.
Because I know there used to be a vendor license only.
Yeah, yeah, they're all the same. It's an easy one sheet.
And what does it cost on a business license a year for them?
Fifty dollars.
Fifty, so that covers them for all events throughout the year for a business license?
Yes. And I believe it is prorated, that's not my specialty, so as they keep going through the year, it's a prorated cost.
Just one more question. We talk about weather awareness to, I guess in any event, is that going to be, I guess with everything that happened this, with our flooding, any event, I guess, we really need to be aware of the, the weather coming in, that we may in the last minute have to cancel events because of the threat of flooding?
Yeah, any flood warnings are definitely something that we're going to be looking at.
Mr. Mayor, Members of Council, I, I think in watching the weather, there's, you know, storm fronts coming in, low pressure coming in out the ocean, but I think those tropical events, those tropical storms coming in from the warm waters up, up the Pacific Coast from Baja, those seem to be the ones that are, hold a lot of water and, and drop a lot of water. So I think, I think we, we're getting really good at reading the detailed reports from the Weather Department from the Midwest, so.
I think everybody is now.
Yeah.
And additionally, like we mentioned, for the hot months, the heat is an issue as well, so we have to keep a watch on both, both ends.
And don't trust your phone.
Any other questions, comments?
No, no, I'm good.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Next, we have a consent calendar and matters listed under the consent calendar, considered be routine, be enacted by one motion and one vote. Public hearing items are designated with an asterisk prior to consideration of the consent agenda. The mayor will ask whether any member of the public wishes to remove a public hearing item for separate consideration. Members of the council and/or staff may also remove any item for separate consideration. Item A is consideration to waive waiver of section two dash four dash ten A prior discussion rule to allow action on the balance of the consent agenda. One, accounts payable one million, three hundred and fifty-eight thousand, one hundred and ten dollars and fifty-two cents. Two, consideration of approval of minutes. July eight, twenty twenty-five, meeting minutes. July twenty-nine, twenty twenty-five, meeting minutes. August sixth, twenty twenty-five, special council meeting minutes. August twelfth, twenty twenty-five, meeting minutes. August twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-five, meeting minutes. September ninth, twenty twenty-five, meeting minutes. And October fourteenth, twenty twenty-five, meeting minutes. Item B is consideration to ratify contract number CS two zero two six zero zero seven seven two, just-in-time heating and cooling to make AC repairs at the fire station for the amount of seven hundred and fifty-four dollars. Funds for this project are budgeted in account number one zero five six five one two three six, building maintenance. Item C, consideration to ratify a letter of support signed by Mary Camaros to the Arizona Department of Transportation to support the Town of Miami twenty twenty-five, section five three three nine grant application for the Copper Mountain Transit. And item D is consideration to ratify contract number CS two zero two six zero zero six two with EarthQuest Plumbing and Pumping LLC, executed in the City Globe Emergency Declaration, Resolution Number nineteen twelve, for emergency water and sewer infrastructure repairs necessitated by the September twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-five flood event in the amount of twenty-four thousand dollars, six hundred and thirty, twenty-four thousand, six hundred and thirty-seven dollars and sixty cents. The project is budgeted through account number two zero eight zero zero eight zero eight, DEMA twenty twenty-five flood. Is there anybody from the public, the council, and their staff wishing to remove any of these items separately? I would like to remove accounts payable separate because it's a large amount, just to explain. Anybody else?
Mr. Mayor, if there are other comments or questions, I motion to approve the consent agenda as read and remove item.
A one.
A one, thank you.
Second.
Motion second for approval of consent agenda minus A one. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
You oppose nay, motion pass. Just want to highlight just the reasoning for one million, three hundred and fifty-eight, one hundred and ten dollars. We did have Peoria Ford, council-approved vehicles that were purchased at four hundred and thirty thousand. And United Fund, the approved amount donation for two hundred thousand dollars for City of Globe businesses recovery at two hundred thousand. And then we had a Blue Cross Blue Shield benefits premiums, and that came out to one hundred and fifty-three thousand, which, which elevated the amount.
Mr. Mayor, Members of Council, it's about six hundred and thirty thousand that is a one-time budgeted funds. Well, the, the four hundred and thirty was, was budgeted, and the two hundred thousand is because of the flood. So about seven hundred thousand in, in normal spending, and normally we balance between four to seven hundred thousand on accounts payable.
And this also says, this is a three-week AP report, too. It was three weeks instead of two weeks, so.
That explains a lot.
Thank you. That's all ahead.
Mr. Mayor, if there are other comments or questions, I motion to approve item one A as read.
Second.
Motion second for approval of accounts payable. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
You oppose nay, motion pass. Item five, A, new business, consideration to approve Resolution Number nineteen twenty-two, a resolution to approve intergovernmental agreement, IGA two zero two six zero zero seven four, emergency management division of the Arizona Department of Emergency and Military Affairs, and request to waive section two dash four dash ten A prior discussion rule. And it'll be Chief Robinson presenting, and Shelley, can you read Resolution Number twenty-two prior?
Resolution Number nineteen twenty-two, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Globe, Hela County, Arizona, approving and authorizing the city manager to execute an intergovernmental agreement between the City of Globe and the State of Arizona Department of Emergency and Military Affairs. Department of Emergency and Military Affairs, to be a participant in the Arizona Mutual Aid Compact to receive and provide med- uh emergency assistance. Is council pleased with that reading?
Yes.
Yes.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Um as probably most of you are all aware, um you know, with with mutual aid agreements, we participate in those as as fire and and police agencies on a regular basis. The the mutual aid agreement you had before you is is a more expansive agreement that covers a broad a broad amount of of topics from personnel sharing to to equipment sharing for for events such as natural disasters like we had. That those events can involve equip- involve equipment sharing such as heavy equipment for for moving debris, moving uh it can it it can involve um sweepers, it can involve personnel coming in to assist in in something like an emergency management role like we we uh used with with personnel from both uh Avondale Fire as well as as Glendale. Along with the Arizona Mutual Aid Compact, it 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 also involves us in what's known as the the EMAC or or the Nationwide Mutual Aid Compact that that uh as as an incident unfolds, the larger it gets, the more resources you need, the broader area you may need to cover in order to bring those resources in. This agreement, this agreement was, you know, it was utilized uh during during uh the flooding event that we had. With that, you know, w- we need to come back and and ratify our participation in that agreement. It it took some time and some work and there's still some concerns remaining and and if Paul wants to address those, he can, or I can address them.
You go ahead and start and.
As as we went through that, uh you know, with along with every other agreement, we sent that off to to Bill Sims, the city attorney, for review. He expressed some significance concerns with the agreement um related to indemnification of of personnel that either, you know, that we bring in or our personnel going going out um in in response to to this type of event. There was some language that was previously in in the in the AZ MAC that that was not currently found in in the newest uh the newest version of that of that document. Um with that, you know, he had some, he had some heartburn um and expressed some serious concerns with that back to uh back to the city manager and and in turn back to to me. We went, you know, we tried to work with with Dima on potential amendments to that. As it stands right now, um their their position is there won't be any amendments until that agreement comes back up for for review. Um we've included our notes to them uh on those issues that 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 Mr. Sims identified. So that when when that agreement does come back around for review, um it would be included in there to potentially have those amendments that that add that indemnification language back in.
So, Mr. Mayor, Members of Council, uh like I say, the um our city attorney pointed out some some really important uh, you know, and uh problematic areas that an employee from another agency could come over here. And if if something were to happen to that employee, um you know, the liability would would definitely be in question as to whose workman's comp, who would be accountable and and exposure um if if something happened. Um our uh the help that we've received was uh just irreplaceable. We we need to have uh the ability to pull experts and and these people in. In the future, under this version of that agreement, we'll be very careful what roles we assign. I think in the in the leadership roles and the support roles that are are, you know, not in the field, that will not be a problem. We will probably, you know, hedge on pulling any any more uh line-level people in. I know we had line-level people from other cities working under that agreement before we realized the some of the pitfalls in in that. Um so we just, we're gonna be very careful. We're gonna push to get it changed. Um and uh and and make everybody, you know, make it a fair agreement. And cover, it's, it needs to be fair both to the cities and the and the people who are being, you know, uh shared. Uh uh one agency, I think, uh you know, sends a group of of employees over here and they expect that they'll be protected and covered and and there are some problems with with that. Um luckily, everything went really well and uh like I say, um I, our our emergency managers got to see uh a second round of floods live and in action and they were out there taking pictures, experiencing. They were kinda like, you know, it was an interesting thing. Usually, they come in after the fact, but they were knee-deep in the middle of that. But in the future, we'll be aware of this and take note of this and make sure that we we keep uh we limit how many people we bring in, make sure the mission critical, and then just uh take care of those people. But there's no other, no other way around it, yeah.
So that you were to protect us uh for liability?
For liability, workman's comp and and yes. I don't wanna go on the details of what what could happen, but it it leaves it leaves employees exposed without any options other than, you know, to go legally.
Does this agreement, does it, does it include, uh I I know bringing outside people, but how about people that within our own staff that, you know, I I know? I I guess through Dima, we were able to pay pay for our our fire and and police personnel. But Public Works isn't included in there. There are other ones. And we have local contractors that weren't included in that could have done the same work as bringing people out. Is this something that we can put in in that state contract to bring people in? Is that the same thing?
This is, that's kind of a different, a different angle as to how we hire and bring on staff. Or when we have our, when when we uh true up and and look at at our procedures on on getting companies lined up prior to emergencies and and doing that. But all our staff was was a hundred percent protected. Um we would think about it if we were to loan our staff to another city because they're under probably the same or 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 county, they're in the same compact. But it it didn't have anything to do with any uh us utilizing any private sector people. It was just when one agency that's a, that's just for ease, ASRS, um sends a a person to work in another agency, who has the liability and who has the workman's comp responsibility? And Bill Sims goes back to Yarnell Fire where workman's comp was totally redone after that and he knows workman's comp and and uh pointed it out to a number of his attorneys. I I would see that there may be a a centralized push from the risk pool because they're not happy with this at all.
So this is separate than Wildland than the Wildland.
Yes.
Two thousand and one, this is different than the Arizona State Mutual Aid cuz they come in and and that's a different agreement.
That's a different.
Correct. But but it really important, uh critical that we we approve this. Uh we 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 said we would approve it. We went on good faith. Uh we we accepted the help, saved, uh you know, uh gave us quality people uh at no cost to us. And so that, it 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 was very important. But like I say, we just need to, we now know and and we will be careful.
The perfect example of that is the the personnel from Tolleson that were brought in uh with the with the VAC truck to help support. That was a, that was a critical piece of of equipment that was needed and and their staff took the time to to spent several days here uh operating to to work on, you know, work on our sewer system and and you know, that's, that's what that's, that's what that agreement is meant to to do is when we, when we have those needs that we can't maybe feel because of something or because we have so many things ongoing, you know, that that gives us a point to reach out to 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 fill some of those resources.
And Mr. Mayor, Members of Council, and John, was, didn't Superior supply us with a cr- a couple crews over the weekend? I don't know. There there, yeah, so and and we didn't realize at that time that, you know, uh that that there is this uh, you know, this hole in the coverage. Um so we're, you know, both Avondale, Superior, Tolleson, Glendale, you know, we're we're so thankful to and I'm sure I'm missing other uh municipalities uh that helped us, but uh we're now aware of it.
So now these, this action that we take will protect us and we can continue to use that.
We we can continue to use it, but it still remains a flawed document. And so we have to be aware of of that that hole in the coverage and make sure that we minimize our exposure.
Oh, okay.
Well, I'm glad Bill caught that, Mr. Mayor. It's uh that's why he makes big bucks. We expect him to be good for us, so.
Well, after what happened in Yarnell, I think everybody's listening on that. But I I think and and I think our city staff or whoever's gonna be asked to, cuz I went to executive board to get cities uh uh last week and I brought up on a board meeting, they have to have some kind of class for disasters. I mean, we went to the disaster and D, you know, the everything that needs to go on. So I think it's important that we put that on in the in the League of Cities and the annual conference on
That's a great suggestion.
Making people aware or cities aware of what you need to know because when it happens, it's too late. You're you're learning.
Mayor, I think you make a great presenter for that class.
I think we got a lot of great presenters.
I think you bring the whole, you know.
Staff of them now.
Call them in time to put them on the.
We'll we'll get you all matching. I survived the flood of twenty-five.
Any other questions, comments? And this is a wave, uh.
Yes, please, cuz they're they're waiting on us.
I make the motion to approve Resolution nineteen twenty-two, allowing the state load via participant Arizona Mutual Aid Compact to receive and provide emergency assistance and waive section two dash four dash ten A.
Second.
Motion second for approval, item five eight. And is there any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose nay, motion passed. Thank you, Chief. Item five B is council was considering possibly approve a payment of sixty-five thousand, one hundred and twenty-five dollars and five cents for the fi- fifth year of the our existing contract for tasers and body worn camera services with Axon Incorporated and a negotiated settlement payment of nineteen thousand, nine hundred and fifty-eight dollars and forty cents for a total amount of eighty-five thousand, eighty-three dollars, forty-five cents to be be paid from GL account one zero five seven one two three four. Contractual services and prove a transfer of twenty thousand, one hundred and eighty-three dollars and forty-five cents from account one zero five 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 three zero zero zero. Contingency undesignated account number one zero five seven one two three four contractual service and request to waive section two dash four dash ten A prior discussion rule.
And Mr. Mayor, Members of Council, I'm I'm gonna start this and I'm gonna ask Chuck to come down just in case we get into the any any questions on the the technicalities on this. But the um, so we, uh and and Chuck, correct me if I'm wrong. We have a five-year, a a a five-year contract with um Axon to to do both uh body cams and and tasers. And one of those, with Chuck, was it the the body cams or the tasers that they failed to bill us on?
That was the tasers.
The tasers. And so um there is a period of time that they failed to send us an invoice and we didn't pay an invoice that we didn't get. And so in in what we're doing is approving the the final fifth year of this. Um but there is a a nineteen thousand, uh nine hundred and fifty-eight dollars and forty cents uh settlement payment that Chuck negotiated to tidy up uh the missing, the missing payments. And that was about, I think, two to three years that we got um credit for.
Yeah, they they went ahead and waived uh two of the five years.
And then, but we're we're pulling this out and then um uh and then, but we are, we do have to pull about twenty thousand, one hundred and eight, uh eighty-three dollars and forty-five um from contingency uh undesigned it. And is that out of the PD budget or out of the the big contingency fund? Admin, yeah. So so this is a a a pool from our admin contingency fund. So we're we're making a payment and then pulling additional twenty and then making that payment. But that's the the smaller three hundred thousand. That's the the flexible one, not the three million dollar council one.
That's not the fund balance one.
Not the big, big dog.
Okay, so where does that leave us now? Does that, the the contract is expired? Are we gonna renew another contract?
Well, I, we hate to show our cards, but what what happens after this year?
Yeah, so our contract extends into twenty twenty-six. And we're currently negotiating with Axon and different companies
Oh, okay.
To make a determination on on what we'll do in the future.
So, but this is, uh you'd like say, they they were really flexible about it. Uh they they worked well with us. Um you know, I credit to them for um, you know, admitting the uh uh basically clerical error and and um working with us to cover that payment. So I think it's really a fair deal and they're, uh like I say, in good faith and a good vendor.
Credit, go ahead.
Uh Commander, um so, you know, this was a five-year, uh we're looking at possibly maybe another five-year ex- uh either an extension or another company. Does the technology in in these devices, do they change dramatically in those, in that period of time? Are we looking at something maybe even better product down the road?
They're they're constantly improving their product. And so, yeah, when you move to a new contractor, moving to an upgraded product. Typically.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor, Members of Council, but but Commander, we don't have the same tasers we had five years ago. They, do they, uh are are we using the same exact physical tasers we had five years ago?
No, they've actually refreshed us one time during the, at which is spelled out in the contract. If they uh, if there's an upgrade, they'll upgrade us with.
And that's part of the contract?
It is.
Oh, good, yeah.
And Mr. Mayor, Members of Council, to Commander, the um the body cams are a success. I mean, it's good that we have body cams.
Oh, yeah, they're uh excellent benefit. And, you know, the, in the beginning, officers were a little hesitant with those, but I I think everybody sees the value in those now. Uh with the lack of complaints we get now with everybody knowing that we wear those, so. And it's easy to figure out what happened typically whenever we do get a complaint come in.
So it's it's, um like I say, it's been very helpful, you know, the, you know, picture's worth a thousand words and video priceless.
Commander, one question, just cuz through the wrist pool, I'm part of it, but uh the bowler wraps, do we use those or are those even, did those even accelerate to another level?
They would have their place in a very specific circumstance, but uh other than the vice mayor, we haven't.
Well, you didn't do the bowler wrap yet. Did you do the bowler? Oh, you did. I'll do it again.
Let's do it on First Friday.
There you go.
Other questions or comments, I motion to approve it as read and waive section two dash four dash ten A.
Second.
Motion second for approval, item five B. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
You oppose nay, motion passed. Thank you, Chuck. Item six A, action item, consideration to withdraw grant number GS two five six one zero five zero six eight for the amount of one million, thirty-eight thousand, two hundred and forty-three dollars from the Arizona Department of Transportation for the construction phase of the Broad Street Sidewalks project.
And Mr. Mayor, Members of Council, um I'm gonna take this. Travis is um uh doing family activities that are important. Um and so uh we had uh gotten a design grant that everybody knew about for downtown sidewalks. And um and then had had received this uh uh one, one million-plus uh grant to do the construction. Um but somewhere along the lines, we we realized that the the primary focus of the of the construction would be ADA ramps and and uh not a complete redo of some of the areas that we were so important. So we would have that patchwork. We're in the process of doing uh updating the design. Um but that's gonna raise the cost of construction. And we we had a infrastructure uh workgroup meeting on this and I believe the number is between three hundred and four hundred thousand uh more that it would cost if we we just took this money. Uh I think the grand total would be what, one point four to one point six to do the whole job. Um we got an offer, a a suggestion from A dot that we um uh pass on this grant and apply the next cycle and then ask for the full amount with the full construction of the full rebuild rather than just the focus on ADA ramps. And we thought that was a a pretty good deal. Um I I think it's important that we, it it's gonna be, you know, it'd be, it would be awkward to see all this construction downtown and then you come in and it's, you know, to use another word, piecemeal.
Not complete.
Yeah. So so we have, you know, we need some, we, serious, serious work in there. So this is um act, asking to actually ratify the withdrawal uh of that grant. Um, uh, ADOT is, has been good partners to us and it's not very often that they go on record saying that, that if you do this, we will, you can apply for the next cycle. And we can't, they can't say that we will win that, but they were very encouraging. But they're motivated to do that because they've already spent half a million with us on design. It, it does them no good to, to deny us a grant after we've spent half a million on design. And we've actually done this before, I think on Cottonwood Bridge, where we, we pulled back one and, and we said, let's pull back. It, like I say, it's counterintuitive to say we're gonna give back money. Um, but, but we're helping them manage their budgets, they're helping us. And so that's why, based on the input from the, the three council member workgroup, uh, they had a deadline, they needed to get to know about that. We still could, if, if you did not want to do this, we could, we could stitch it back together. But we, but they're, uh, they're making their budgetary plans based on us giving this money back right now. Um, but I would encourage, if council has any questions, the, the workgroup members had a good discussion. So Mayor.
Yeah, and I think another critical part of that workgroup was that we, we were under the gun to meet the deadline for the upgrade with the, the new design, which won a, which was gonna be difficult to, to accomplish and then be able to get the program started when the, when you were supposed to with the amount of time, so.
That's exactly what I was gonna say. I was in that workgroup and
Yeah.
Um, the tipping point for me in that conversation was that, in fact, that, that even if we wanted to pursue this, this amount here, uh, it wasn't in the cards that we were gonna get kicked off in time.
Right.
And, uh, the project would basically fail, so, um, I think it's important to know that.
Yep. John, you have some comments?
Yeah, Mayor and Council, I just wanted to actually add on to the conversation in the sense that one of the things also per post flooding, uh, when we're looking at the design, I actually, we walked with the, the engineers when they were scoping this workout and a lot of the areas that we saw that were affected with the floods, um, there, additional cracking or separation, that's where we had the conversation as well, that there's gonna be more work that's gonna be entailed. So that's, there's some flags there that kinda set us back to have a more in-depth conversation of maybe pulling this back and re, you know, redoing the design for more replacement or total replacement, which was the goal to begin with.
So.
Mayor, I would move to, um, withdraw grant GS two five six one zero five zero six eight in the amount of one million thirty-eight thousand two hundred and forty-three dollars.
Second.
We got a motion second for approval of item six A and that'll be a ratification that we already.
Well, it's, it's, it, uh, approve it as written.
Okay.
I think withdrawal is, is fine.
Okay. Is there any other discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose nay. Motion passed. Item six B is consideration to approve change order number one to Willdan Engineering for contract PS two zero two six dash zero zero five six to provide additional flood inspections and structural assessments of affected commercial properties due to the September sixth twenty twenty-five flood event for an amount not to exceed sixteen thousand one hundred and twenty-six dollars. Funds will be tracked under account two zero eight zero zero eight zero zero eight DMA twenty twenty-five flood with potential reimbursement available through disaster and relief resources such as DMA, FEMA.
And Mr. Mayor, Members of Council, I'll cover this, but if, uh, I might ask Tony to jump up here just in case there's any questions. Um, uh, so Tony, if you wanna uh grab the mic, but what, uh, you know, with a series of events that came on, we had the initial inspection, which did a, a, a massive amount of, uh, well, we did the, the full level of inspections. We, we found the need for about twelve additional inspections, uh, in the downtown. And Tony, it, it was more than the downtown. Do you wanna, you don't wanna come up, do you? So the, this was, this was the original, the amount was structural and a civil engineer for this, this second portion of the Willdan?
Ye- yes. Um, good evening, Mayor, Council. So when we brought them back, that's what it was covering. We, we identified some additional structures that included residential, commercial, uh, that we needed to do further detail assessments on as well as civil surveys. So, um, while we had, uh, opportunity to have a civil engineer come in and identify some of the areas that we, uh, are known problem areas, they came in and that, that was part of that contract.
And Mr. Mayor, Members of Council, the, the process that, that, uh, the, the building official put together with the, the, the green, yellow, red tags right off the bat, got people informed. We had, uh, uh, an outside structural and, and, um, uh, like I say, civil engineer come in and, and look at this and, and make, and call the balls and strikes. And that, and that's what you've been hearing, everybody looking to, to reduce and, and, uh, you know, fix those things that, that make them yellow or red. Um, and so having them back to tighten this up and cover those that were missed, that was very helpful. Uh, a little bit more money, uh, but, um, I, I think the, the advantage to this was, um, you know, just really helpful to give clear guidance to, um, the property owners, the build, the business owners, the residents and, and us for some of the structural stuff.
And lastly, over time, just like everything else, so when we, we didn't, uh, the initial rapid assessments, we knew going in that that could look different in a matter of a day or two days or three days so forth because of how the, um, you know, the water affected structures. So that's what we identified at that point. We did see changes. We had, uh, it was DPS that came in, we were able to do a flyby with drones and look at the aerials above. It identified some more issues that we weren't able to see prior. Uh, so that was helpful. And then again, because of the timeframe, we started seeing the effects of expansion and different types of settlements sitting in. And that's when, uh, we have these folks come back in and reevaluate some of those structures.
So Tony, these just weren't, uh, new ones? They were all reass- they also reassessments of, of previous, uh, assessments by the engineer then?
They were, uh, because we were seeing those changes occur. We wanted to, to have uh, an engineer come in and reevaluate, reevaluate what was going on. We had a feeling, uh, or we kinda knew what was gonna happen with those, but then when, when we saw those initial changes starting to occur, um, that's what rose flags, um, and brought our attention to possibly unsafe buildings. So when we see the initial assessment of a green tag building, um, that goes to a red tag, it was because initially it was a green tag. Initially, we didn't identify and that's what the rapid assessments do. Just what it says, a rapid assessment. It's then and there. And we look at it and we know that, okay, now it looks okay, we'll give it a rapid assessment, but they can change. Um, and it could go backwards as well, right? It could go from a red, yellow, or a green to a yellow or to a red. And that's what occurred over time. And we just wanted to bring the engineers in to make sure that we were making the right decisions.
So, and Mr. Mayor, Members of Council, a, a shout out to, uh, Pat Walker, the, not only finance person, but, uh, she is the one that helped me get, uh, tied into leadership at Willdan. Um, we, they, we had a, an urgent need for, for quality people quickly and they, they got it, a, a, a team put together, um, as soon as we needed them. Uh, I, I think it was, it could have been less than a week, but, but I think it was, uh, about a week that, that worked out for us. And then the, the, the other thing is when we did the second phase and brought people in, it was the, the same structural engineer that had done the first, um, evaluation. The, the, the same engineer came in and did the second evaluation, which gives us continuity and consistency.
I just wanna emphasize that I, you know, I, I think the, the, the initial red, the tagging of the buildings was, was essential to, to the process, but bringing in the city hiring engineer to come in and do it, because if, if we didn't do it, then we, we'd be relying on the business people to hire their own engineer to get that initial. And that could have taken a very long time. So I think us taking the lead and bringing these engineers initially to the tagging, the engineers, and then the reassessment, it, it was important, I think, through the process.
Yeah, and these were highly trained, specialized engineers that knew about, uh, these types of disaster inspections.
Yeah. Mr. Mayor, I, I've seen this phenomenon before in my career. Mother nature and water tables and humidity all play a factor over sometimes a couple of years. And so it's good that, uh, one, we had qualified engineers on scene for rapid, but also for long-term. And we'll probably continue to see that. Thank you, sir.
They're coming back to reassess? Is this what we're doing? They're coming back to reassess this, or this is just to ratify and this is change order?
This is to ratify, this is to pay the bill for that. These, these were, both these contracts were, um, authorized through the emergency powers of the mayor. And so we called them in. So we kinda got the cart before the horse on this. They've done the work and, and now we're doing the contracts. Travis has been busy retroing a lot of contracts for some, for this work that we just had to have. But with the emergency declaration, uh, you know, check the mayor, we need the thir- service, and then we, we do the paperwork afterwards. So, so this, for now, is complete.
Okay.
That said, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to motion to approve item six B as read.
Okay. Motion second for approval of item six B. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose nay. Motion passed. Thank you, Tony. Item C is consideration to approve grant number GS two six five seven zero five zero six four and GS two six five seven zero five zero six five for the amount of ten thousand two hundred and eighty-two dollars and twelve thousand six hundred and four dollars ret- respectively from the Arizona Governor's Office of Highway Safety to support, to support DUI Task Force and Traffic Enforcement. Funds will be received through GL account two zero four two zero nine zero one two. Chuck?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Uh, earlier this year, we applied for, as we typically do, for two grants through the Governor's Office Highway Safety. Uh, recently we're notified of our award and we're coming tonight to see if you'll accept that award so we can move forward with, uh, DUI Task Force over the holidays, uh, and purchasing some equipment specifically for those needs.
Mayor, make a motion.
Go ahead, Freddie.
No, sorry.
Jesse, you got it.
Make a motion to approve item six C as read.
Second.
We have motion and a second for approval of item six E. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose nay. Motion passed. Thank you, Chuck.
Thank you, Commander. Thank you.
Item D is consideration to approve funding agreement number GO two six five six zero five zero seven eight between the City of Globe and Resolution Copper Mining LLC for funding of one hundred thousand dollars to be applied to the purchase of the arrow articulating one hundred foot ladder fire truck for the City of Globe and request to waive Section Two Dash Four Dash Ten A prior discussion rule.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Um, so in the midst of our flooding event, um, our friends at Resolution or partners at Resolution Copper wanted to be able to, uh, contribute to the articulating fire truck as, as a number of the other mines have. And so, you know, uh, it took some paperwork to get it initiated and now here is this contract that they've put through their lawyers and everything. So it will, it is a grant and it will have a reporting process with it. But at the same time, um, they, they, uh, came to a generous amount of a hundred thousand dollars towards the purchase of our, uh, articulating hundred foot ladder fire truck. So, and I'd like for you to, uh, waive the pri- prior discussion rule so we can turn this around.
Questions, comments?
Mr. Mayor, I motion that we accept this generous donation, um, and waive the rule, um, and accept item six D as read. Second.
Motion second to approve item six D. Any further discussion? Uh, just a question, is that gonna be forwarded immediately for payment like we did the previous one of eight hundred thousand or is that?
We're gonna pay this right off the bat.
Yeah.
Forwarded to, to the company, okay?
We need to send that as part of the agreement, uh, that we have. It's to be spent, uh, almost immediately. And so we will, we will add it to the, um, we will send it to the, the manufacturer and increase the kitty.
And I'd also like to extend publicly our, um, thank you to Resolution Copper.
Definitely.
Yeah, they.
All those in favor, signify saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose nay. Motion passed. Thank you, Connie.
Thank you.
Item seven, any late agenda items?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, we have no late agenda items tonight.
I'd made a second call to the public. Do we have anybody online or email?
Nothing on, in, um, email.
Uh, workgroup meeting report, I think we covered that pretty much, kind of the one, the infrastructure. scheduling the meetings?
And, uh, Mayor, we are asking, uh, consideration to, um, cancel the December twenty-third. We have a council meeting. While I was in favor of this, the staff was, uh, said, no, can't do it. And so we wanna ask you to cancel that twenty-third meeting.
The staff said no. Okay.
Who'd that be?
Yeah, right.
Which department was that?
We need names.
We, we may, we may ask if, if we do need something, 'cause we got a lot of contracts and things going on, uh, we may ask for a, a noon time meeting, uh, that is, uh, you know, where, where we just have to do, get some signatures, get some approvals, move some of these contracts. We need to make sure we get everybody paid. And so you may see a special meeting that way. And as long as we have a quorum and, and can get people here, we don't wanna get too deep into the, you know, conflicting with holiday events.
Sounds good. Everybody good with that?
Yes.
That works for us.
Item eleven, future agenda items?
Um, we did have one item that we were going to bring back, um, uh, at the next meeting, which is December ninth. Uh, and that is that normally about this time, um, we ask council to, uh, approve, uh, the closing of City Hall between, uh, Christmas and New Year's. And, uh, we did not have that on the agenda yet, but I did wanna get feedback from council. Is council, um, willing to, to address that, see that the next meeting? Uh, and it, it has no cost, but it allows everybody to have a good, uh, you know, vacation spirit. We still, the, it, it falls, what, I think on a Wednesday or Tuesday, Wednesday. So we, we still will be open the, the day bef- the day before and the day after, the Business Days. We, but, um, but that week between, normal operations will, uh, will cease and, uh, public safety have, we have a way of, of making them hold too. So is council willing to, uh, consider that, uh, approval?
I think, I think with all the hard work they've done during this flood, absolutely.
Yes.
Thursday, Friday.
What's that?
Christmas Day, Christmas Day is Thursday, Friday.
Yeah, so it's, we'll, we'll work it out. But like, but like I say, we wanna make sure that we don't, we, like I say, that we, we work up until the start of that holiday and then, um, we're back as soon as the holiday, the, the New Year's Eve holiday is over.
Sounds good.
Okay.
Okay, executive session, do we have motion to go into E session?
Second.
Motion second to go into executive session. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Executive session.
Yeah.